We'll call the meeting to order. Could you call the roll for the City Council's Successor Agency Finance Housing Power Authority?
Okay, it's two separate roll calls. The first one will be for the City Council Successor Financing and Power. Councilmember Authority Member Crist.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Vice Mayor Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris. We have a quorum.
Could I have a motion to excuse? Well, I'll do it at the end for both of them. Go ahead. Next roll call.
Okay, this roll call is for the Housing Authority. Authority Member Crist.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Mann.
I'm present.
Zetto. Smith.
Here. Could I have a motion to excuse Zetto and Mayor Paris?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, tonight the invocation is Spiritual Assembly of the Bahais of Lancaster. I don't have a name down here. You could say it when you come up. And if everybody could please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My name's Joanna Dejvana. I'm the Secretary of the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahais of Lancaster. We don't have any clergy in our faith. We have elected officers instead. And I'm, as Secretary, the head honcho, they like to say. This particular prayer I'm reading is called "A Prayer for America." It was presented to the Americans by Abdabaaha, who was the son of Baha'awah, when Abdabaaha visited America in 1912. This is the centennial of Abdabaaha's visit to America, and so it means something special to us. It is a prayer for America. It is frequently used at City Council meetings. It has also been used in our nation's capital as well. "O thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee; these hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. O God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestow." From the Sacred Writings of the Bahai Faith by Abdabaaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey, could you lead us in the flex room?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Presentations here. Well, our first presentation, I have Captain Johnson here from the Sheriff's Station. We have Deputy Michael Cooper. Is Cooper in the audience? Get up here, buddy. You're not retiring on us, are you? Will you come do this for free, then? We could just... There's a couple fans out there of yours.
Actually, just so everybody knows, he has decided to come back as a reserve, so he will make that expensive salary of $1 a year for the commitment, so we appreciate that.
How many hours does he have to do a month?
Eight hours.
So you could just assign him here four hours twice a month? Is that it, right, Captain?
We could do something.
No. Well, let me tell you about Deputy Cooper here, okay? He's been with the LA County Sheriff's Department for 29 years, 10 months, how many days? Do you have any?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight days, okay. From May 1982, and you're gonna retire now in March.
Yes.
Excellent. His assignments included Wayside, Maximum Security, Merrill Loma Facility, Antelope Valley Station, Lancaster Station. Throughout his career, Deputy Cooper has displayed exemplary conduct and dedication to his duty and has merited praise and commendation. Deputy Cooper will retire from the LA County Sheriff's Department March 31, 2001. And Bob, maybe you'd like to say a few things while I get the plaque out of the box here?
Yeah, you know, every month we have the opportunity to come up and recognize our outstanding individuals, and I really, really appreciate that opportunity. And Mike is gonna be extremely missed for the Sheriff's Department and Lancaster Station and this community. He has served this community for a long time with the exception, and I will tell you, he's not only involved here at the City Council that most of you recognize him from, but he runs our Explorer Program and mentoring our youth and does just an amazing job, so I think he deserves a huge round of applause. And like I said, we will take every advantage we can at getting every minute we can out of him under that reserve status. So Mike, congratulations, and I know we'll see you for a few more days.
All right, now get back to work. Next, we have Imani Stanford. So, did I say it right, Imani?
Imani.
Imani, okay. She is the SOAR Student of the Month, and so I'm gonna read off all these things here. You were a 4.0 GPA in high school valedictorian, right? First place in the Jeopardy! style Black 365 Knowledge Bowl on African-American History, Princess for the Antelope Valley Black Chamber of Commerce, and Miss Juneteenth 2011. Your activities: Junior On Your Honor Guard for 2011 graduating class, and the Antelope Valley Union High School District Veterinarian Program, Visual and Performing Arts Club 2009 to present to present, currently serving as treasurer. And then what do you do in the visual and performing arts?
What we do is we prepare skits to take to competitions, local competitions such as DTASK, and then if we make it past there as finalists, then we can go to state competitions.
Oh, very good. And then the avid peer tutor. She's a volunteer with the Antelope Valley Animal Hospital and a career veterinarian. Is that's your goal, then? To go on to veterinarian school?
It was.
It was. Has it changed now?
Yes.
Should we change it? You didn't update it. Okay, what is it now?
Now, I wanna study biomedical science and maybe become a pharmacologist. I wanna work with medicine, so...
Oh, very good. Excellent. So, on behalf of Mayor R. X. Paris and the City Council, congratulations on being the SOAR High School Student of the Month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do parents wanna come? Family wanna get pictures? You got one? You got it. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Scott Acton. Okay, Scott, how you doing there? Okay, so Scott is our Athlete of the Month. So let me read all this here that he has. It was, he's a senior at Desert Christian High School, and you're on the boys' cross-country team. You're the captain? Very good. He helped lead his team to second-place finish at the state cross-country meet, where he individually finished sixth out of 182 runners. This past season, Scott finished first at the Bosco Invitational and Desert Mountain League Finals, third at the Clovis International, fourth at the Bel Jeff Invitational, sixth at the Mount SAC Invitational, and fourth at the CIF Southern Section Championship. Scott ran a personal best three miles in 14:40, breaking the school record by 22 seconds. Excellent. Scott, how much is that, a mile?
4:53.
I can't even run a six-minute mile. So Scott has been named the Desert Mountain League MVP the past three years, and has been named both All-State and All-CIF for the past two years. Scott has been in contact with UC San Diego, UC Santa Barbara, Pepperdine Occidental, and Masters College. Where do you think you're gonna go?
I don't know.
Don't know yet? You waiting for the best offer?
Yeah.
Okay. Academically, Scott has accumulated a 4.4 GPA and is currently ranked ninth in his class. Scott has been part of the California Scholastic Federation for all six semesters and is also part of the Honor Society Cabinet. He has also been given the ACSI Disguised Academy... Is that Academy Award of Academics, Athletics, and Christian Service. Scott plans on majoring in Civil Engineering and Structural Engineer in college. Scott volunteers his time at Central Christian Church, working multiple activities such as homeless outreach, neighborhood cleanup days, and assisting in the nursery. So, very good. So on behalf of Mayor R. X. Paris and the City Council, congratulations on being our Athlete of the Month.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Glad you could give your input. If anybody wanted to speak on any agendized items... I can't even talk tonight. I gotta have some more water here. There's babbling over here. So, yes, anybody who wanted to speak... Anybody who wanted to speak tonight, besides Marvin, go ahead and fill out a blue card in the back and give it up here to the Council, Allison Burns, if you want to speak on non-agendized items. And I just want to say that the consent calendar consists only of items that we consider routine business, which have minimal or no discussion or special presentation. It is contemplated or required. These items can be acted on as a whole in one motion and second. So if you desire to speak on any consent calendar item, we allow you one speaker card to speak on any of those three minutes. All speakers' cards must be filled out and turned in before and prior to the consent calendar or any other item that we're speaking on. We will have, just to tell you now, we have lights here. If you haven't spoke here before, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds to go, and the red light comes on when three minutes is up, and I'll cut you off if not. And if you're speaking on a particular subject, agendized item, and you start drifting off into another topic, I'll try to bring you back there. So are there any City Manager or assistants, Deputy City Manager, are there any items to be removed? A council, is there anything that you wanted to pull?
No, sir.
No? Okay. So, the first thing, we have Housing Authority New Business, H-A-N-B-1, and we have one speaker card. Do we have the report?
Good evening. As you're aware, the state eliminated redevelopment. This became effective February 1 of this year, and in order to continue the housing functions under redevelopment, we have moved the housing operations to the Housing Authority. This action, for your consideration tonight, would be to adopt the Housing Authority budget to operate from February 1 through the end of the fiscal year, which would be June 30 of this year. Available for any questions, if you have any?
Any questions from Housing Authority? Okay, Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor, Mayor of Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I have a few questions about the Housing Authority budget and...
Well, as you know, Mr. Reeves, this is not the time for question and answer. This is a time for you to give your input before we make a decision as a legislative body.
Okay. I meant that as a rhetorical...
Rhetorical question?
First of all, in the budget, there's $302,610 for salaries and $126,000 in benefits for those salaries. And I'm wondering, in the future, if this comes up, that we can have a detailed description of how many people are being paid with those salaries? Right now, it just says $302,610 for salaries. Also, in this budget, it has $452,000 for escrow services, $261,000 for desert sands operations, and it has $1 million for property acquisition, and general fund overhead allocation, $344,000, and demolition of acquired property, $320,045. I'm wondering why some of these things, like property acquisitions, a million dollars, sometimes when you do things, they don't come out to be even like that? So I'm wondering why we have round numbers on some of these. The income on this budget is rental income from desert sands is $340,000, and land sales is $500,000. Again, why the round figures? And why not, in the future, we have a detailed description, like we will later on the finance on the redevelopment budget? They'll have detailed figures, like in the future. For the Housing Authority budget, we have detailed figures, not in round numbers, but for specifics. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open it up for discussion or hear entertaining motions. I'll move we approve the budget for February 1 through June 30, 1912. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Call for vote. It's unanimous. Power Authority Consent Calendar, PACC-1. There's no speaker cards. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve the consent calendar for the Power Authority. Do you hear a second?
I'll second that.
Call for vote. New Business on the Successor Agency. I didn't see a card for that one either, so if... We'll just waive the report unless somebody wants to hear it without objection, and I'll entertain any motions or any discussion.
I'll move to adopt the amended final enforceable obligation payment schedule from February 1 through June 30, 2012.
Do you hear a second?
I second.
Call for vote. Great. Council Items. The minutes for the last council meeting? There's no speaker cards. Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes? Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Call for vote. Consent Calendar. Is there any one on the consent calendar that... Anybody from council that wanted to pull any of the consent calendar items for discussion? If not, Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor, Mayor of Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking on CC-4, Resolution 1213, creating and adding the classifications of Senior Projects Coordinator, Projects Coordinator, and Projects Assistant to the compensation schedule. According to the attachment for CC-4, the Senior Projects Coordinator will make between $5,982 and $8,200 a month, which comes to about $72,000 to $95,000. Project Assistant will make from $4,600 to $6,100, which comes to $50,000 to $72,000. Projects Coordinator will make $5,600 to $7,500, which comes to $60,85,000. And as we've seen in the other thing I mentioned, that this doesn't include the benefits, so you consider maybe one-third of whatever they make will be paid in benefits in addition to their salary. In a time when we're all having to cut back, I think that instead of having these jobs at these salaries, we could double these jobs by cutting the salaries and making two positions for each job description. In that way, we would be creating jobs and not having such high salaries and high benefits for just a few employees. Thank you very much.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised?
So moved.
Second? Do I hear a second?
I second.
This is for Joint New Business 1. We have one speaker card, so could we have a report, please?
There are two items for your consideration of adoption tonight. The first one being to adopt the general fund budget for the portion of the former agency land that moved over to the city in February of last year. We have an incubator building that generates revenues that can be used to fund operations of the building itself, as well as any excess revenues can be used for other purposes and projects that are considered economic development. That is the first item for consideration, is for the budget to carry out those activities. The second action is for the Lancaster Successor Agency budget, and that is to enable the successor agency to pay the obligations from February 1 through June 30 of this year, at which time we'll adopt a budget for the following fiscal year. So this closes out this fiscal year for the shift from redevelopment with the state elimination of redevelopment.
Thank you. Any questions?
Joint New Business 1, General Fund Budget. I was looking over the handouts, the attachments to this, and a few things caught my attention right off the bat. We're spending $371,700 for legal services, and I would like to know, you know, what that is, $371,000. Another thing, as I mentioned in other times up, was the salaries. We have permanent salaries and we have temporary salaries. We have $143,000 for permanent salaries. We have $8,000 for temporary salaries. And then we have a slew of benefits for those salaries. Going back to what I said before, depending on how many people are and what they make, some of those jobs could be split up and we could create jobs. It might be a good idea in the future when we're approving a budget to the successor agency and other budgets, if we have a PowerPoint presentation of details of the budgets, how many people are being paid, what specifically is being used. I mean, I don't think it would be that difficult. I mean, you have to compile the data, so you're using individual data to compile these figures. Why not just put all of them up there, and you're gonna come up with the same total anyway? So in the future, maybe we can have a more detailed presentation of what actually is being spent.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I... Any questions? We'll entertain any motions or discussion.
Vice Mayor, can we take these concurrently, or do we have to take these... Allison, do we have to take these?
We could take these together.
You can take them concurrently.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to adopt the general fund budget and the Lancaster Successor Agency budget for the period of February 1 through June 30 of this year.
Call for...
I second.
Call for vote? Okay, New Business 1, Lancaster Performing Arts Center Foundation Bylaws. We have a speaker card on the bylaws.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you tonight is an action to amend the Lancaster Performing Arts Center Foundation bylaws. This is a cleanup item, which documents the process for selecting new members to the foundation, and also brings in line with the commissions throughout the city, the process of a yearly appointment. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor, Mayor of Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I remember the problems we had with the Performing Arts Center, and it was a conflict between the two boards and so forth. And in lieu of the fact that the council has to discuss some of these issues in closed session...
Mr. Reeves, I think you're confused. I don't think it was on the LPAC Foundation.
Okay. Well...
Isn't that correct, Ms. Paris?
Okay.
I think you're talking about the Cedar Center.
I stand corrected.
I'm not correcting you. I'm just trying to clarify what you're talking about, so we can make a decision.
Thank you. At any rate, you disturbed me, however, that we're giving power to the mayor to appoint the Board of Directors and also the president of the corporation, whether it's the Cedar thing or LPAC. I don't believe that the mayor should be given that authority. I think that as far as the Board of Directors, he could have input with your consent, but... And then they could elect the president among them. So that's a possibility. Thank you.
We'll entertain a discussion or any motions? Don't all jump at it.
Okay, well, I'll jump in here. I'll make the motion to approve the recommended changes to the bylaws for the Lancaster Performing Arts Center Foundation.
Do you hear a second?
I second.
Call for vote. It's unanimous. What's that? We need one more vote?
Sorry.
There we go. We got it. Okay, Council Agenda Items. Council Agenda Item Number One. Council Agenda Item Number 1, this is appointment of Cassandra Harvey and Elizabeth Brubaker to the Successor Agency Oversight Board. These are, I didn't write it down here, but is this, is this the mayor's nominations for these?
Yeah, one of them is the mayor's appointment, the other is a previous redevelopment employee.
Right, yeah. And that's Cassandra Harvey is the mayor's nomination. So that's what we have here, and we have one speaker card. Michael Reeves.
This will be the last time, so...
Yeah, I noticed you don't have a non-agendized item in there, so that's...
Vice Mayor Smith, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I've mentioned before about appointments. As you are aware, we're having an election in about a month and a week, and I asked the council to hold off on some of these appointments, because there might be two new people up there or one new person, and they would probably would like to have say on whomever is appointed by the council. So I would hope that the council would consider making this interim appointment for a month and a half until the new council's situated in April. As far as the two candidates, Ms. Harvey and Ms. Brubaker, they're certainly qualified. I listened to Ms. Brubaker in a presentation before the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, and it was illuminating, and Ms. Harvey, Ms. Harvey has been on the board before, so she's familiar with it. It's no reflection on their character or anything. It's just that I believe these appointments should be interim, and then when the new council's seated in April, all the new people or the regular people can vote on them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I hear the nominations are Cassandra Harvey and Elizabeth Brubaker? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve CA 1.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. Unanimous. Now, they don't, do they, Jerry, is, do they have to be sworn in too? No, just the next two. Okay, the second one is the appointment of Diana Cook to the Lancaster Planning Commission. This is Mayor Paris's nomination. I'll make the motion for Diana Cook. Is there any discussion?
I'll second that.
Do I hear a second? Call for a vote. You got to start it over again?
No.
Okay, there you go. Got it. It's unanimous, and I know Diana's in the audience, we'll swear you in as soon as we get the other one done, too. Is Linda Lawson here? Oh, there, I see her. Okay, the next one, CA 3, is the appointment of Linda Lawson to the Lancaster Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. This is Mayor Paris's nomination. I will move that we appoint her. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. It's unanimous. And could I have the two ladies come up? And the clerk will swear you in.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies sworn in domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? Take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties of conduct you are about to enter as associate... I do. Thank you.
Lancaster, there's nothing on the Lancaster Finance City Manager or Deputy City Manager. We have any announcements or anything you'd like to say?
No, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council or the Housing Authority on non-agendized matters. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the City Council, the City Manager, or City staff will be able to get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. I just wanted to get up and comment on the recent Board of Trade luncheon we enjoyed. It just reminded me that if people could just sit down together and talk, that would solve most of the problems. I made a couple of new friends there. I had a great time talking to Calvin and Vern Lawson. That was a fun time we had. I had a good time talking to you. I go on and on and on, we're talking economics and stuff, and I was talking about Chinese inflation, and all I really meant was that the Fed and the European Central Bank can print money, but the Chinese printing money's a little different for them. So, but we heard all these good economic forecasts, then we heard some bad things, and, you know, all in all, I'm hopeful. I like the fact that we have so much change going on. Don't hold that congressman idiot thing against me, Vice Mayor Smith. You go to the Assembly and then next up, so I appreciate that. Things will change. Mike Cooper, unbelievable. Thank you for your service. I'll miss seeing you around here. And Commissioner Harvey, Authority Member Harvey, it was just fun, wasn't it? Just to sit down and talk and get to know somebody you never knew before. It's, it's the ticket right there, just to get together and share. But thank you all, and I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Welcome. That's it for the speaker cards. Are there any comments from the City Council before we go into, before we recess in a closed session? Okay, that being the case, we're recessed to closed session. We'll be back in just a few minutes. Okay, we'll call the meeting back into session. Ms. Burns, could you please give us a report on the closed session?
Yes, in closed session, the City Council unanimously approved settlement of the matter of sin versus the County of Los Angeles and the City of Lancaster, case number MC 022152.
From the, it's not, I don't think it's on here, but you can see on the agenda, but we always have council comments. Do we have it on there someplace? Or agency comments? We already have it before we went into closed session, so we're done. Anybody has anything else like to say? Any comments? That being the case, the City Council Authority meeting is now adjourned until Tuesday, March 13th, 2012. Thank you very much.